Hello? Check, hello. Hey guys, welcome to chapel, good morning. I am coming up here for the SWU RAs and we are hosting a girls' night this Friday at 8:00 PM. It'll be in Bounders, which is below the CAF. We're gonna be having like massages, some giveaways, some auctioning off things, so just come prepare for that. Lots of fun, good food, karaoke, just all kinds of things. So just come out and just fellowship with us tonight, thanks.
Want to remind you, like to remind you that next week is Missions Conference, so Monday morning in chapel, special Missions chapel, and then also Monday evening and Tuesday evening, then Wednesday morning. Significant time for our university as we celebrate and look at missions and think through how God might want us to be involved in the act of taking the gospel to people, whether it's right here, in our city, our nation, or around the world. Also, after chapel this morning at 11 o'clock, we're having a dedication service for the golf practice range and for the putting green and the picnic pavilion. So if you don't have a class, you're certainly invited to come around and be a part of the dedication of this new area of our campus. Probably the best way for you to get there is to go out of the right of the chapel and down beside the chapel and then up the driveway to the golf practice range. That probably would be the best way for you to get there. Some members of the Board of Trustees, there will be cars that will be here to take you around there, and if you need assistance after chapel, there'll be cars out front that will help drive you around to that place. We're gonna ask this morning that students remain seated in here so that the trustees can get out and then you will be able to scan out, so after things happen this morning, I will come up and make sure that we transition in that way. We're very happy to have Board of Trustees members with us today, and tomorrow they are here to do the work and the business of the university. And if you're a member of the Board of Trustees or spouse, I'm gonna ask that you stand and let our students greet you and welcome you to chapel this morning, so. Let's all give them a big hand. Our guest speaker for chapel today is Greg Reynolds. Greg is a district superintendent of the Shenandoah District of the Wesleyan Church. He is a graduate of Southern Wesleyan University, has worked in the church throughout his life, and is doing a great job of mentoring pastors in churches and planting churches in the Virginia, general Virginia area, and he will be speaking to us this morning later on in our chapel service, and we're very excited and very happy that Greg will be sharing with us. This morning, let's turn our attention to the Lord as we give our hearts over to prayer, and I invite you to join me as we pray together. Oh God, you are a good God. You are a gracious God, or a God of love and a God that gives to us even beyond what we won't need or deserve. Thank you, Lord, that you love us that way. Lord, we pray today that you would be with the concerns that we have, for the people that are on our heart, for the people that we are praying for, for those that are sick, for those that are hurting, for those, oh Lord, this day who are far off from you. We pray, oh Lord, that you would be especially with those people. And Lord, for those today that are celebrating, for those that are enjoying your presence, for those that know your goodness and kindness, Lord, we give you thanks and ask that we would celebrate with them as well. Lord, we pray for our campus. We thank you for the Board of Trustees. We thank you that they are here and that they are concerned and they are part of who we are and that they are doing this work, and we thank you that they take time out of their schedules to come and to be here and to work for our interests and for your glory. Lord, be with us in this service. Fill us with your presence, in song, in word, in prayer, in the greetings, the talking, the celebrating. May your name be glorified. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Good morning. Let's all stand and prepare to worship.
During this next song, we're gonna be singing "The Great I Am," just a continuation from this last song that we just sang. That last song just spoke so much truth into my life, so as we move into "The Great I Am," allow it to speak truth into your life. Allow God and the Holy Spirit to speak truth into your life, because he is real and he is in this place.
I wanna be near, near to your heart, loving the world and hating the dark. I wanna see dry bones living again, sinking as one. Hallelujah, holy, holy, God Almighty, the great I am, who is worthy, none beside thee, God Almighty, the great I am, the great I am. The mountains shake before you, the demons run and flee. Hear the mention of your name, King of majesty. There is no power in hell, or any who can stand before the power and the presence of the great I am, the great I am, the great I am, the great I am. Holy, holy, God Almighty, the great I am, who is worthy, none beside thee, God Almighty, the great I am, the great I am. The mountains shake before you, the demons run and flee. Hear the mention of your name, King of majesty. There is no power in hell, or any who can stand before the power and the presence of the great I am, the great I am, the great I am, the great I am. Hallelujah, holy, holy, God Almighty, the great I am, who is worthy, none beside thee, God Almighty, the great I am, the great I am. I wanna be close, close to your side, so heaven is real and death is a lie. Amen. Please be seated.
Great job this morning, guys. It's good to be home. I, uh, can I, you take this? I attended this great institution back in the mid-'70s, and that was the era of great music. I'm not talking about the Gaethers. I'm talking about '70s music, baby. Sirius XM Radio Channel 7. I'm talking about the Bee Gees. KC and the Sunshine Band. Lou Rawls. You'll never find another love like mine. Or Tony Orlando and Dawn. Oh yes. Remember "Tie a Yellow Ribbon" around the old oak tree? That was great. I was housed in Child's Hall. Yes, sir. Bill Bennett and Wes Cockman would roll us out of bed every Sunday morning, so we had to go to church. There was no getting away with anything. We had to be on campus at the late hour of 11 o'clock at night, and on the weekends we got to stay out to 12:00. I don't know if things have changed much or not, but anyway, it's good to be home. I told Becky, my wife who's down here, I said, "Man," I said, "it's been quite a while since I've stood in front of a group of college kids. You know, you guys can be pretty intimidating." And I told her, I said, "I'm pretty nervous about this assignment." She said, "Well, I'll help you." She said, "Don't try to be funny. Don't try to be entertaining, and don't try to act intelligent. Just be your normal self." That's a wonderful way to start a morning. I don't blame you. If you get up and leave, I'm thinking about leaving myself. Speaking of not being very funny, I live and minister in a very interesting, beautiful, wonderful part of the country. We had a woman in one of our churches, she was an elderly woman, a few weeks ago, well into her 80s. Just a sweet woman, still pretty spry in one of our churches, and they were taking prayer requests one Sunday morning, and she stood up sort of impromptu, and she said, "Pastor, I'd like to request prayer. I'm going in Tuesday for an autopsy." And her daughter was sitting beside her, she sort of pulled on her skirt and she said, "Mom, it's a biopsy." She slapped her hand and she said, "Don't tell me what I'm going in for. I know what I'm going in for." Somebody heard the daughter say, "Mom, it's gonna be a short week." So. That's exactly right. Well, I wanna thank Dr. Boss and Reverend Dill for those, whoever had the choice of allowing me to stand before you guys today. I really appreciate the opportunity. If you have the scripture with you today in the form that you carry the scripture, whether it's the book or on an app or whatever, your smartphone, I'd like to invite you to turn to the Old Testament Book of Joshua. The Old Testament Book of Joshua. I want to read verses 6 through 13 for you and invite you along. The purpose of what I want to speak about this morning is to encourage and challenge every one of us in our walk with God. So I would ask you to listen on purpose today. Joshua, chapter 14. Once you have found it, say amen. And let's begin reading with verse 6. Joshua 14, verse 6. Now the men of Judah approached Joshua at Gilgal, and Caleb, son of Japhne, the Kena ites, said to him, "You know what the Lord said to Moses, the man of God, at Kadesh Barnea about you and me? I was forty years old when Moses, the servant of the Lord, sent me from Kadesh Barnea to explore the land. And I brought him back a report according to my convictions; but my brothers who went up with me made the hearts of the people melt with fear. I, however, followed the Lord, my God, wholeheartedly. So on that day Moses swore to me, 'The land on which your feet have walked will be your inheritance and that of your children forever, because you have followed the Lord, my God, wholeheartedly.'" Now then, just as the Lord promised, he has kept me alive for forty-five years since the time he said this to Moses, while Israel moved about in the desert. So here I am today, eighty-five years old. I am still as strong today as the day Moses sent me out. I'm just as vigorous to go out to battle now as I was then. Now give me this hill country that the Lord promised me that day. You yourself heard then that the Anakites were there and their cities were large and fortified, but the Lord helping me, I will drive them out, just as he said. Then Joshua blessed Caleb, son of Japhne, and gave him Hebron as his inheritance. The books of Joshua and Judges are great books. Guys, they're books for men. I'm talking blood, guts, and adventure, baby. That's what those two books are. Speaking of adventure, author John Eldredge, who wrote the book Wild at Heart, he said about us guys that we have an adventure to live, we have a battle to fight, and we have a beauty to rescue. And I think that's true. And guys, if you haven't read Joshua and Judges lately, I challenge you to go read it. I thought a word from this book would be good for us this morning. First, let me tell you a little bit about Joshua himself. Joshua was a young man during the last days of the bitter realities of Egyptian slavery. He witnessed the divine hand of God in the events that led to the emancipation of the Jewish people, the Israelites. It was there when God parted the Red Sea and the Jews, the Israelites, walked across that body of water on dry ground to escape the oncoming armies of Pharaoh. Joshua was the only one that was allowed to accompany Moses up Mount Sinai where the Ten Commandments were received from the very hand of God. He was one of the twelve spies who went, who were sent into the Promised Land to look things over, you might say. He was strong, he was a military strategist, and yet he was a statesman. Joshua was a husband and a grandpa. "The book of Joshua itself is the story of conquest and fulfillment for the people of God," said one author. Following many years of slavery, a divine deliverance, daily manna, forty years of wilderness wandering, the Israelites were finally allowed to enter into Canaan, to enter into the Promised Land. This Old Testament book is the story of God taking on the powers of the world and making them bow to his name and his sovereignty. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to declare afresh and anew today that our God's name is powerful, it is sovereign, it is eternal. Put your hands together and give him praise this morning. But I don't want to talk to you about Joshua. I want to talk to you about another guy, a man by the name of Caleb. Caleb was also one of the twelve spies that had entered Canaan some forty years earlier for that look around. Because he and Joshua had believed God to help them, to help the Israelites conquer the land, and you know the story, many of you did, there were ten spies who became fearful. They did not want to go, they thought it was a bad idea because of what they saw. Joshua and Caleb said, "Listen, we can take them. Let's go, let's keep this thing moving." Because Joshua and Caleb had trusted God, had believed God, who wanted to obey God wholeheartedly, God allowed the two of them to live and to actually enter the Promised Land. Not only that, but God through Moses had told Caleb, back in the day, "The land on which your feet have walked will be your inheritance and that of your children forever, because you have followed the Lord, my God, wholeheartedly." Caleb responded to Joshua in verse 10. If you look at it there again, we've read it, but I want to look at it again. Joshua said, "Just as the Lord promised, he has kept me alive for forty-five years since the time he said this to Moses, while Israel moved about in the desert." So here I am today, eighty-five years old. I am still as strong today as the day Moses sent me out. I'm just as vigorous to go out to battle now as I was then. Now give me this hill country that the Lord promised me that day. You yourself heard then that the Anakites were there and their cities were large and fortified, but the Lord helping me, I will drive them out, just as he said. Caleb's attitude, I want you to catch this. Caleb's attitude, his humility and his trust said, "The Lord helping me, I will." The Lord helping me. He did not say, "The army helping me." He didn't say, "My family helping me." He said, "The Lord helping me, I will." Caleb, at eighty-five years of age, trusted completely in Almighty God to help him drive out the Anakites. He believed that God would help him scale the high walls He believed that God would help him scale the high walls of the cities. He had complete confidence that Jehovah would help him break through the walls of those who would keep what was his. "The Lord helping me, I will." That's the message this morning. Hear the word of the Lord today. "The Lord helping me, I will." "The Lord helping me, I can." I'm talking to a very intelligent group of people today. I have confidence in all of you. And you would agree with me that every one of us... Every one of us in this room, me included, we are very, very needy people. For example, the Bible tells us that all have... All of us have sinned and come short of God's glory. Ladies and gentlemen, we've all missed the mark. Yes, we have. The Bible tells us that we need to be born again. Jesus invites us to have a new birth spiritually. I'm thankful today that we can be saved. Every one of us need to follow the Lord into the spirit-filled life or into the lordship of Christ. That's one of God's standards for his people. It's not one of his suggestions. It's a standard that we be holy. And every one of us, me included, we have personal areas that need attention and adjustment in our life. And at fifty-seven years old, I want you to know I have not arrived. I want you to know that I still have areas of challenge and areas of struggle. Every one of us in this room are needy. Well, the question arises, what do we do? We've sort of established the fact that we're needy. That's a no-brainer. Well, what do we do? Well, that's a great question. Let me give you some suggestions. First of all, we can ignore it. I think that there are those who probably just ignore their needs. They, uh... They act as if they don't exist. It's sort of the stick-your-head-in-the-sand mentality. If you ignore it, it'll go away. Well, it wa... It will not. So we can ignore it. Another thing that we can do, we can worry about it. And there are those who they worry, worry, worry over their needs. You know what... You know what worry is? Read my lips. Worry is torment. That's what worry is. And there are those today who are worrying themselves sick. But that's all that they do. They do nothing else, but they worry. They torment themselves about their needs. I think another thing that we could do, another option that we have at least, is we can believe the lie that we can't do anything about it. "We were just born that way. That's the way my family was. That's the atmosphere that I was raised in. It's in the cards. That's the way I'm going to be." Ladies and gentlemen, hear my voice today. That's the very lie that the enemy of God wants you to believe. That you can do nothing about it. You're stuck. You're unfortunate. It'll never change. It's a lie from hell. There's another thing that we can say, and some of us my age and older, sometimes we can say, "Well, I'm too old to do anything about it." Well, Caleb certainly didn't have that attitude, did he? Eighty-five years old. And he said, "Hey, Joshua, Moses made me a promise that this land is mine. And I know that there are enemies and I know there are walls. And I know there are cities. But the Lord helping me will take care of it." Amen. We're not too old. Let me tell you, we can have all of these kind of responses to our needs. And remember, we're all needy. I'm not talking to an individual in the room who is not needy. If you think you're not needy, you know, uh... Get over yourself. You're needy. We can have these different responses, or we can say in faith... Hear me. We can say in faith with Caleb of old, "The Lord helping me, I will. I will. The Lord helping me, I will answer God's call to preach the good news, even though I'm afraid to stand in front of a group of people." I may be talking to some young man or some young woman in this room today. Look at me. That God is divinely calling you to be a proclaimer of his word. And yet you are shy. You are backwards. You say, "I get sick. I vomit when I stand in front of people. I cannot do it." Let me tell you, the Lord helping you, you can. The Lord helping you, you can. "The Lord helping me, I will share my faith, my hope in Christ, even though I'm shy and lack personal confidence." I heard somebody say just a couple of weeks ago that the best place to start witnessing and sharing your faith is five feet from where you sit or stand. That's the place to start. "The Lord helping me, I will share." "The Lord helping me, I will forgive, even though I've been hurt to the core." And I'm talking to somebody today. You know, you've been hurt to the core. "The Lord helping me, I will, I can forgive." "The Lord helping me, I will be generous in giving to those in need." "The Lord helping me, I will be generous to giving to those who necessarily aren't in need, but I will give anyway." "The Lord helping me, I will go to a people. I will go to a culture, a country that has yet to hear the gospel of Jesus Christ." "The Lord helping me, I will." "The Lord helping me, I will step up to the challenges that stand directly in front of me today." What are those challenges, students? What are those challenges, faculty? Administration? No doubt, they're real. "The Lord helping me, I will stand up to them. I will, the Lord helping me, forgive myself of bad decisions that will affect my life forever." You know, ladies and gentlemen, sometimes the hardest person to forgive is ourself. Are you with me today? It's the hardest person to forgive. And no doubt, there are some people in the room that God has forgiven you. Others have forgiven you. But you haven't forgiven you. Well, let me tell you, the Lord be in your help. The Lord be in your help. The Lord be in your help. You can forgive yourself. And this one sort of hits close to us. "The Lord helping us, we can be an ambassador for Jesus in a society, in a world..." When I say "world," I mean that part of society that is organizing itself without God. And we are living in that kind of society. And let me tell you, "The Lord helping us, we can be ambassadors for Christ in this society." I heard Ed Stetzer a couple of weeks ago at Liberty University. Ed Stetzer is a pastor. He's an author. He's a well-sought-after speaker. And he said something about our society that I thought was very interesting that I want to share with you. He said that this world, this world in which we live is in an an illegitimate and an illegal rebellion against God. And the church, the people of God, is in a rebellion against the rebellion. I thought that was wonderful. And I don't know about you, but I want to be a part of the rebellion against the rebellion. I want to be on God's team. I want to be a follower of Christ. I want to be salt. I want to be light in this dark society. And let me tell you, ladies and gentlemen, the only way that we can be that is God helping us. Are you with me today? God helping us. Yes, Caleb, this eighty-five-year-old man. When many would thought that life was over, it was time for the rocking chair and the porch, he said, "Oh, no. God made me a promise through Moses. And the Lord helping me, I will. I will drive out the Anakites. And I will possess my land." I want to ask you today, what's your need? Will you say, "With Caleb, the Lord helping me, I will"? This is what I want to do. I want you to stand with me, if you would, please. I have a feeling that there are some students. There may be some faculty. There may be some administration. There may be some board members who would say, "Greg, there are needs. There are needs." And this truth has spoken to me today. Sometimes I wonder, I have wondered what I will do. But God, through his word, has told me that with his help, I can. If that's you, I'd like for you to come just for prayer. I'm not going to ask you to say anything. I'm not going to embarrass you. It's just you acknowledging that you're going to trust God. Would you come? And we're going to pray together. Come on. "The Lord helping me, the Lord helping me, I will." "The Lord helping me..." What are your needs today, guys? Do you need his help? Amen. Lord bless you. Amen. Come on, guys. "The Lord helping me, I will face what I need to face." I'm going to ask some of our board members and maybe their spouses if they would come. I think this is a great time for the board to just sort of interact with the students here. Maybe some of the ladies with the young ladies and some of the men with the men and just pray with them. Come on, board. Just gather in and pray with these students. Others of you may want to come as they're coming. Maybe you board members can stand back and look for a student or something. Somebody's coming up this aisle over here. There's some more students coming this way. Board members, get with some students. Get with some students. Get with some faculty and pray with them. "The Lord helping me, I am going to face that need. I'm going to face that issue." As I pray, board members, I want you to pray with some of these, if you will. Just there quietly, maybe find out what their name is, if you can. Pray with them. Then when we're... Once we're done, I'm going to turn it back over to Pastor Ken, who will give us instructions. Oh, God, we are so thankful today for your unchanging word. We're thankful today that you are the great I am. You are the Lord and you change not. Your power has not grown weak. Your ear has not grown deaf. Your voice has not grown weak. It has not grown still. And Lord, we confess today, I confess that I'm needy. And Lord, there are many in this room by coming that they've said, "God, I'm needy." And Lord, you know what those needs are. Lord, I think of these... These young people. And I think of the adults that have come, the faculty, the staff. You know, God, I am confident of this, that you knit every one of them together in their mother's womb. All of their days were ordained before one of them came to be. They are the apple of your eye. You love them more than anybody else ever has, ever will, or ever can. And Lord, I just ask right now that whatever the needs are, oh, God, that you would help them, Lord, to somehow be able to lay them at your feet and to say with Caleb, "The Lord helping me, I will. I will. I will. I will go forth. I will forgive. I will believe. I will say yes. I will trust." Oh, God, I believe that you want to do great and marvelous and mighty things in our lives and then through our lives, Lord, that will impact this dark world. Oh, God, help us to be ambassadors. Help us to be salt. Help us to be light. Lord, help us to stand. Lord, thank you for this great university. Thank you for all who make it up. Thank you for her history. God, I praise you. I praise you. I thank you. In your strong and your precious name, I pray. And everybody say? And everybody say? And everybody say? Amen.
Greg, I thank you for those inspiring words. Thank you for the Spirit of God. We're going to ask now that the students just remain for just a moment. We're going to let the board of trustees, uh... Exit. If you need a ride around to where the dedication will be, cars are out front. Those that want to walk, you can take the elevator down, go out the back of the building and up the drive, or you can walk around to the right of the building and down the sidewalk and then up the drive. And, uh... You can make your way there for the dedication of, uh... The golf practice range, the putting green, and also the picnic pavilion that's out there. So, uh... Those are the ways that... And then students, if you don't have classes, you're invited to come and be a part of this dedication as well. Thank you much. You're dismissed.